Is it closest without going over?
Right.
Never established formal rules.
Eight forty.
Cody.
Tom, is this, is this the intention for the permanent spa? I mean, I actually like it better. Is this the intention that we do permanent?
So there's.
This, I don't know.
Okay, babe. I'm gonna.
Thank you so much.
Coming back into session. We just finished with the workshop for the Campus Master Plan and we now go to item five on the agenda, which is the general public comments. Anyone wishing to address the town council on any topic that's not on the agenda tonight, please approach the podium, name and address, and you have three minutes.
Benjamin Howard, four Oakdale Drive. I had some friends up this weekend, I know you guys don't hear enough, it's some nice compliments over things that have happened in the town. They happen to come in from Boston and the Portsmouth area and the drive in down Haggis Parkway, they were impressed with the rock gym, more than impressed with the holy donut. No, they would not suggest the cheese-filled bacon donut. It sounds good, but it wasn't good. And they also thought the skate park and Memorial Park were a couple more of their comments, so I think we've done a really good job. So take the compliment as you will. These things are slow, we shouldn't rush into anything, but there are people noticing the sort of vision that has been in place here, so, well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Larry Harrow, nine Pierden Drive. Your first order of business was an executive session in regards to Michael Doyle. I understand that's confidential, but it seems from what I've read in the press, one of two things are gonna occur here, either you make a decision to continue litigation or you drop it. I hope maybe that you can share that with the public at some point. Or do I have to wait to read it in the paper?
Anyone else wishing to address the council on matters not on the agenda? Close the public comment period, minutes of April eighteen and April twenty-five?
If I could make a point.
If you would.
The April twenty-fifth minutes are not done, so the eighteenth are.
Were distributed.
Yes.
Cody hasn't slept since that meeting, so she's.
I'll accept the motion for approval of the April eighteen minutes. So moved.
Second.
Comments or corrections? Seeing none on the paper. Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda, I don't believe there are any. The items to be signed this evening are the treasurer's warrants, which I'll do at the end of the evening. Order eighteen dash twenty-eight, the seven P M. public hearing on the proposed municipal school budgets for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, I'll ask the town manager to introduce this back.
We have no formal presentation plan for this evening. I did leave at the, at the chair at the door, a copy of the one-page handout that was handed out at first reading, and at this point, the budget is still in, still in review, and so there's no, been no formal changes at this point, so as we sit here this evening, that's kind of where we're at. I do expect some further movement from the finance committee, who has their final meeting scheduled for next Thursday, May ten, and that's the meeting where they will consolidate and coordinate their recommendations to the full council that will be considered at the second reading on May sixteen. So I'm pleased to answer any questions, but I didn't have any presentation prepared.
Peter Hayes is the chair of the finance committee, and I don't know, are you expecting, you probably had comments at council comments on finance, or do you want to reserve those for, make them now, later, or reserve them for May eighteenth?
I think Tom kind of summarized, I mean, it's kind of a work in progress. We have, I was gonna report out on sort of the, you know, later on in the evening, but we've had, we've done work as a finance committee, we've also met as a joint finance committee with the school, and we've had conversations, we're still mindful of the goals that we had set, and we're working through that, but our intent is over the next week or so, we're gonna have those conversations and come up with recommendations on where we go from here.
So the finance committee has meetings scheduled to continue its work, and we're still two weeks, two weeks away from second reading. So with that introduction, anyone wishing to address the town council on the public hearing for the budget may approach the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, Kelly Murphy, five Woodfield Drive. I just urge the council to accept the budget as presented by the school board and superintendent. There is nothing extra in it, in fact, there've been reductions in a lot of areas and shifting of staff to make up for gaps where other districts would be able to fill it with dollars. I just read an article that Cape Elizabeth and Brunswick High School, well, their school departments, were listed in the best in the state for music education, and wouldn't that be great? We not only could be adequate in our allied arts, and it's not for any fault of the teachers or for lack of will for the school board and the school department, but we just don't have the funding for it. The inclusion this year of extra music at the middle school, and I believe there's an extra band being worked into the schedule at the high school, is all happening with reallocation. So we're, we're not close to the best, I would like adequate, and that goes for a lot of areas. So I urge you to accept the budget as presented with no further reductions. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak?
Good evening, Benjamin Howard, four Oakdale Drive. Today I had the pleasure of sitting down with the superintendent and the chair of the school board. Sort of got a lot of my questions answered in regards to the school budget. It definitely seems that many of the line items which I saw as potential places to save money and cut are already tied up and based off of the contracts, off of previous contracts that we've already entered into. The areas I specifically looked into were places where the budget had increased over five percent over the year and was a monetary gate difference of ten, at least ten thousand dollars. Again, most of it was with contracted services where the money can't really be touched other than getting rid of employees. There were some areas that I'm still trying to find answers for, but I think the school board has done a extremely good job at, you know, trying to find places in the budget where they can. Maybe there's a little one last push that could be made, but it does seem that a lot of people are putting a lot of work into this this year, and it's nice to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on the town and school budget? I should point out that we received a whole series of emails that supported the school budget particularly, and urged the town council not to initiate any further cuts from Jessica Humble, Elizabeth Chalmers, Jennifer Swala, Jennifer Jubilus, and Michelle Grant. I won't read them, but they all endorse the school's budget and the hard work that was put into preparing it and submitting it, and strongly support it. Any other comments? Late arrivals?
I'm sorry, I've literally just come from Bangor. My name is Stacy Newman, I live at seventeen Windsor Pine Drive. I was gonna write what I was gonna say, but I'm late. So I am here to say that I don't like this budget. I think it is too trimmed down. I think there's a lot of things that need to be in this budget that aren't there. That being said, I know why the budget is what it is, and I think that you've done an excellent job, again, coming up with the budget. I, I'm sorry, I'm still out of breath. One of the things that's missing from this budget is, for example, a new teacher for second grade in Blue Point School. My middle child is in first grade at Blue Point, he was one of the people who was affected by that teacher getting pulled. That is a tough class, I can say that, 'cause my kid's one of the kids that makes it tough. He is an energetic seven-year-old, and that class is filled with them, twenty-one of them. His teacher is incredible, but she has to spend a lot of time working with the energy, and, and first grade isn't the way it used to be. He is really good at math, doesn't get that from me, so I can say that. And so she tried to pull some extracurricular for him, and she couldn't do it, because the curriculum that the first graders are working on, this program she had, she hadn't signed up for anything other than first grade, and it was third grade math that they were working on. So it's not like when we were, you know, in kindergarten or when we were in first grade. There's a lot of time on academics, and to have these huge classes affects it, it affects what they can do. I also feel really strongly about foreign language. I mean, from when we were putting, we were creating the written language, the studies have shown that little kids absorb languages easier, and we don't have it in our primary and elementary schools. And I heard that it's possible that could be cut at the middle and the high school. These are kids that we have to prepare for a global economy where almost every other country, they can speak at least two languages. Again, I say all this because I think that we need to compromise as a town, and I am willing to put those things that I want aside, those things that directly affect my kid for this town. We all know that right now, our town is divided, and I don't think it's ever been more divided than it is right now with this recall vote. And so I am willing to support the budget, but I am hoping that all of you, every single one of your, you town councilors, because you are leaders for this town, will say that you support the vote, that you, the budget, that you will vote for the budget and ask everyone in this town to vote yes on this budget. We do not need another divisive school budget summer in addition to what is going on. I do not think our town can recover from it. So I come here and compromise. As always, I wanna thank you for your service, and you to the school board, and I hope that everybody will support this budget the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the town or school budget? Close the public hearing. We are not going to, this is the public hearing, and it really isn't intended to be a point of discussion for the town council. Town council members may make remarks and councilor comments at the end, and the meeting is not going to take so very long, so if you wish to stick around for that, that would be great. Order eighteen thirty-four, seven of the hearing and action on the new request for a food handler's license from Morgan Schaefer, D B A E and M Higgins Beach Market located at eighty-two Spurwick Road. Town clerk will.
All, the applications are in order, they've worked with codes and planning on obtaining their occupancy permit, and as soon as that's issued, they, if this is approved tonight, we will go ahead and issue their license.
Great, I saw activity around there yesterday and today, some vehicles in and out. Public comment on the order. Close the public comment, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Discussion?
Just wanna wish the new owners the best of luck, we're happy to see the market go forward again, I know everyone enjoys being able to walk up from the beach and grab a sandwich and ice cream, and so I'm glad to see it's gonna maintain that use.
The realtor lives just down the street from me, who so told me that they're a nice older couple, experienced with retail and moving to the area to be near our family, children, grandchildren, so it sounds like a, a nice match. Have we had a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Resolution eighteen oh one, act on the request to reclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month, and I'll ask the town manager.
Yes, Brian Longstaff, our zoning administrator, put this matter forward, and I'm pleased the council will permit it on its agenda, and if you'll bear with me, I'll just read a couple of sentences that Brian put together. Building Safety Month is a public awareness campaign celebrated by jurisdictions worldwide during the month of May for the past thirty-eight years, to help individuals, families, and businesses understand what it takes to create safe and sustainable structures. This campaign reinforces the need for adoption of modern, regularly updated building codes and a strong, efficient system of code enforcement and a well-trained professional workforce to maintain that system. Each week of May will focus on one, focus on and celebrate one of the aspects of building safety and how we benefit in our lives and in our communities where we live, work, and play. So thank you for taking the time on the agenda, and just to recognize one of the kind of unsung things that we do at the local level, to make sure that our structures are safe and, and good for us to use, and appreciate your attention.
Public comment, anyone wishing to address this matter, please approach the podium. Accept the motion.
So moved.
Aye.
Comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Well, old business, none at this time, new business, act on the request, this order eighteen thirty-five, act on the request to set the date, time, and location of the school budget validation referendum for Tuesday, June twelve, two thousand and eighteen, at seven A M. at the Scarborough High School located at eleven Municipal Drive, and I'll ask the town clerk to address this.
This is a normal procedure that we take in order to announce the election being held on June twelfth.
Very good. Public comment on the matter? Seeing none, all accept the motion.
So moved.
Comment?
Nothing, yeah, nothing really to do with the date, the date's the date. The question I do have is that, I'm assuming that this obviously would be school day, and last year there was some concerns expressed around traffic within the parking lot and how that kind of flow happened, and some concern and caution. Are we doing anything differently this year with the school department to make sure?
We'll have fire police out in, out in the parking area and making sure that there's no incidents.
Okay, thank you.
Further comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. None action items, none. Standing special committee reports and liaisons, let's, let's start down with council committees.
So all of my liaison committees met last week, and I was out of town last week, so I have nothing to report.
Very effective.
That's the shortest sentence I've heard from you.
Council heads.
Yeah, nothing actually to report, I kinda reported on earlier on the meetings of the finance committees and working on the budget and sharing ideas and trying to get to where we need to be, so I think I'm good.
Very good. Also, Karen.
Ordinance, nothing really, we're discussing a couple of matters, we are moving something over to Peter. The moorings issue in the harbor, whatever that community's called. Thank you. The communications committee, I'm sorry, I have to cancel it for next week, I have another commitment I have to be at, but I'll be talking to my committee members just about a couple of changes we had made. And then I did attend greater Portland Council of Governments, there's a new vision, vision committee, I guess is what they're calling it, where I'm meeting with other town councilors and select people from throughout Cumberland County to look at how we can be more effective in lobbying the state in particular on matters that are important to municipalities and school districts. So it's a brand-new thing that they're, that they're starting, so I'm very happy to be involved with that, and there's some really great people on this committee, so stay tuned. And, and part of it, they were really impressed to find out how much Scarborough does already to save money, like by sharing fire department stuff, sharing the school nutrition program, and just various things that we're already doing in Scarborough, so stay tuned. That's it.
Thank you. Council voting?
Nothing new, really, just a reminder that the John Andrews Five K supporting the Eastern Trail Alliance is coming up, and I believe you can find a link for that on both the O'Reilly's Cure Facebook page as well as the Eastern Trail Alliance Facebook page. That's it.
Counsel Rowan.
Thank you. Scarborough Housing Alliance was supposed to meet last Wednesday, but given the activity here at town hall last Wednesday night, they were unable to meet. They had discussed recently what to do about the three houses that are gonna be displaced on, with the new public safety building that's on Route One, and they decided that, that they would rather see those houses go to use rather than place any kind of affordable covenants on them for someone to come, come get them, so they're not gonna be asking the council for any restriction on how those houses are used. They've also trying to figure out how to get more activity for the R F P that, that we have released back in February. They are discussing possibly extending the deadline as well as actively soliciting to businesses and, and developers in town. That's it for them. Historic Preservation Implementation Committee met last night, we had a very full schedule. The first and foremost, the committee, the consensus that we came to around the Beechridge Schoolhouse that I mentioned at the last meeting, was that we decided that not to pursue reservation of funds in the fiscal year nineteen budget, so I'm not gonna be making any, any type of motion at second reading for an amendment to reserve any funds. We're just not quite far in along enough along in the bidding process or with the, resolving the ownership issues, so they're gonna hold off on that. The other major item that I wanted to report out was around some corrections to the zoning ordinance with the historic property list. A lot of research has been done by Jessica Holbrook, one of the committee members, about the original list and the reasons why properties were on the list. During that time, we discovered that we didn't have the property right in a couple of occasions, and we wanna bring forward some corrections, so we'll be passing that over to the process, which I believe goes to ordinance as well as the, the planning department. And then they're also have been discussing making additions to the list and decided to hold off on that for now, we'll just make the, the corrections initially and then revisit the, the new additions. That's all I have.
Good, thank you. Counselor, favor?
Thank you. Library had their regular meeting last week, but I missed that because of finance, so I'll provide an update at the, at their next meeting. Appointments is normally scheduled for next Monday, but the committee has decided that given its current workload, right now the H R director is still doing, conducting research based on our work plan, so there really is nothing pressing, and we won't be having that meeting on Monday, given our other meetings during the week. And I do wanna mention that we still have five openings on the Cable TV television committee, and would love to find anyone that is interested.
Thank you. I attended a couple of finance committee meetings, we had one member absent in each, each of the last two meetings, it was a good experience, forced me to get into the budget more, which was very helpful because we go department by department, and it gives us a very good sense of, of whether they are being efficient, whether they are holding the line, and it was impressive, we found some things. I think that the finance committee is going to meet on the tenth of May to make a recommendation for the eighteenth for adjustments that would seem appropriate, but library was a very solid budget and it was, it was an excellent couple of meetings, I really enjoyed them. The pest management committee met. This is really an organics orientation, the town has a policy that tries to advance an organics concept to the way in which our properties are maintained. I support that strongly. It's almost like a, a test lab, we're doing it with the municipal and school properties, and with the hope that with the information and knowledge we gain over the years, this is the fifth or sixth year of its existence, that with the soil testing, we'll be able to make some recommendations to the community in the years, years to come. Todd Souza, the new community services director, is the staff person for pest management and is bringing some very strong. is bringing some very strong organizational skills to the program, so that I think the people who are members of the pest management committee are excited about that because I think they're appreciating the leadership that he's showing. So it's been a nice advancement in the meetings that I've been attending. The Metro Regional Coalition is the seven communities that surround Portland, and we are, we meet every month, and we're continuing to work on developing a plan to better deal with affordable housing and homelessness, a chronic problem that Portland bears an undue burden on, not necessarily created by Scarborough, but by the region and by out-of-state, because it's a welcoming community. So more on that as we go through the year and develop that. I think that's it on committees. Town managers' report.
Yes, thank you. I've had the pleasure of being someplace that's 14 hours ahead in time, so forgive me, I should be asleep right now. But jumping right back into things, certainly budget is a huge focus. We've got the next 10 days to do, I think, a fair amount of work. Confident we'll get there, and pleased to get some direction from finance last night in terms of providing some information and seeing, you know, whether you can make some final adjustments to satisfy your goal objectives. The public safety building process is continuing at a fairly brisk pace. They're moving through the design development phase, so our design is getting more and more exact. Our quantities are being perfected, if you will. We have some work to do in terms of staying within budget, but again, it's still early. And there was a public hearing last Wednesday evening at the public safety building, and my understanding from staff, that was fairly productive. We had a number of residents come out. We did outreach that was actually twice as, twice as great as required, if you will, and that did turn out some folks, that provided some very good feedback. The upshot, as I understand, is that we'll continue to have a road out to Sawyer Road, but it's likely to be one-way for emergency vehicles only, and that's likely going to save some money and certainly lessen impact on the park as well. So we see that as a positive outcome and appreciate the input from the residents.
Nice question about that.
Yes.
Would there still be parking along that road, or have we gotten that far with it?
We're looking at other alternatives to provide some parking opportunities for them. I probably reported on that prematurely, but I wanted to say that we did receive good input, and we're taking that into consideration as we speak with our design team. The Go Up Road project here, this is, Unitil has replaced the gas main from Route 1 down to Maple Avenue. You've probably all had the occasion to go through that area. For what it is, from my perspective, it seems to be working out as well as could be expected. The inconvenience has been limited. They're being very thoughtful about school times and kind of those local traffic demands, even so much as they modified the schedule for trash pickup today. So they've been as accommodating as they could be. I do appreciate the community's patience as we work through that project. I'm pleased to report, and Tody could be a little more exact than me, but absentee voting seems very strong. We've been averaging 250 absentee ballots daily.
Today was 320.
320 today. So I think if you look at some of our recent history, we almost always have more votes cast by absentee than on election day, and so that suggests to me that we're going to be, there'll be adequate numbers to validate that election, which I think is a point of interest of the council and the community. And I also want to use the opportunity to congratulate and thank Tody and her staff for opening on Saturday. That's just another example of the dedication they have to making sure that there's every opportunity to vote, so thank you for that, Tody. And lastly, congratulations to the council and to the community. I had the occasion to watch your public hearing of April 25. That's an incredibly trying experience for all folks involved, and I really commend all of you in the community for being respectful and working through a very difficult evening, and you should all credit yourself for a job well done, given some tough circumstance. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor comments. Let's start down at this end. Counsel Bayman.
Thank you. Just a couple of items first is, also want to say thank you primarily to Chairman Donovan. Last week's special hearing, I know, took a lot of time and planning on his behalf to make sure that we were all respectful, that it was a truly human approach to this, and so I want to say thank you because I got a real good feel for that, and I appreciate the leadership that you took on that. Also want to thank Tody, Colette, and Tracy for coming in, working on Saturday, and for opening up the polls special. That's well above and beyond the call of duty, and I want to say thank you for your effort. That's why you have that Clerk of the Year award up on the wall, because you are so wonderful. And then just last, last night we had a budget meeting, and I wanted to address the issue around the, kind of the analysis of the $750,000 conversation that's been going around, and I really hope that people understand that I support the analysis because I think we need to know what is the impact of a $750,000 adjustment, whether it's school or whether it's municipal. It's going to destroy programs. It's going to devalue some great services that we have, and I think that that story needs to be told as part of this conversation. So that's why I support at least receiving that information. The superintendent, I thought, gave a very thoughtful explanation last night on what that would do to the schools. I thought it was very clear. I know the manager's working on his analysis, and I appreciate that. I just hope people understand that while that is good information for the conversation, it does not necessarily mean that I am in agreement that we need to move in that direction. It's simply, I think, a responsible way of at least understanding what we're doing. So with that, I'm looking forward to next week's process and then the council's eventual approval.
Thank you. Counsel Rowan.
Yeah, I usually let comments kind of roll off my back and let them go, but something said earlier that I just take exception to. The stuffed cheese and bacon donuts, the Holy Donut, are delicious, and I refuse to see it silently when they're decorated. Thank you.
Well said.
How do you follow that?
Counsel Foley.
I, you know, I've not tried it, so now I'm definitely going to try it. I also wanted to thank Chairman Donovan. I thought you did an excellent job last week under the toughest of circumstances that I've ever seen, certainly in this town. And I also want to just encourage voters, as you go to vote, no matter which side of things you're on and how you're thinking, I hope that, you know, I mentioned a bold law, and that law is that logic makes people think and emotion makes people act. And I hope that when you go to vote, you use your logic and what you believe to be the right thing versus being angry because you didn't get the date that you wanted, or those are not the right reasons to vote either way, and I hope people can separate that because I think I've heard, you know, a lot of anger still, and I think we've got to start to move forward, so.
Thank you. Counsel Kettering.
Yeah, I'm going to put in a pitch for poor Counselor Bayman's cable TV. I mean, I know we kind of chuckle about it, but if there are people out here in the community who are interested in moving us forward as far as what we can and should be doing with our TV capabilities, we'd love to have you be part of that committee. How many do you need?
I'll take as many, five.
Five, five more, so please, please consider that. It'd be a good experience, too. Tomorrow is the last day for so-called early voting, so unless you have an excuse for not making it to the polls on Tuesday, you need to vote tomorrow, or, I mean, there will be so-called absentee voting on Friday and Monday, with special circumstances, though. So you have to swear, swear out something, that you aren't going to be here on Tuesday, so just be aware of that. Voting is Tuesday, May 8. I encourage everybody to turn out. I think this vote is going to be, to me, anyway, it feels like it's a reflection of the character of this community. So, and I agree with Counselor Foley that you need to use your logic and not your emotion when casting your vote. And then the last thing for me is, I agree with Counselor Bayman that the more information out there on the budget, so that we can weigh, you know, what does it look like if we cut various things? I'm not advocating for cuts myself, but I think the more information that's out there, the better, so that everyone understands the impacts of any actions that we decide to take. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Counsel Hayes.
Yeah, I think I'll just kind of echo the comments that we've already heard and thank Tody and her team and Colette and others. From a little different perspective, yes, for coming in on Saturday, but I've talked to a lot of people in town, and a lot of people have just remarked on the professionalism. They felt like they were respected, they felt like they came in, they got really great service, they got in and out, so I think that's just, thank you for doing that. It's tough times, there is a lot of emotion in the community, and your team's done a great job of kind of handling that, so thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Counsel Kaye's up.
So I do want to apologize again for my absence last week. It wasn't by choice. Unfortunately, I was out of town for business, and I could not reschedule it, but I did have the opportunity to watch a lot of it live. And I would echo the comments of my fellow counselors. Not so much congratulations to them, I know the effort that was put in by Chairman Donovan. I did want to compliment the community on the decorum I felt was, people were passionate, but I thought it was very well controlled, and I thought it was very well handled in a very much a difficult situation, but it's the situation that we're in, so I appreciate the respect and the process. I thought everybody handled themselves very admirably on both the public and the board members were very articulate in their responses as well. I'll echo the comments. I think the best thing that we can do to begin a healing process is to first get out and make sure that the vote is solid, and make sure that as many people as could humanly possible turn out to vote need to vote, and that helps reduce any questions or concerns about the validity of the vote. A vote is really the only mechanism we have in town to certify and quantify the will of the people. It's not petitions or emails or speaking at a podium or a number of people in a room. It's a vote, so it's important. It's always important, maybe this time more so than others. And finally, I think on, I'll address some of the questions about finance. I've heard in the past, I mean, this is my sixth budget now, I've heard in the past that when you start talking about cuts, depending on your perspective, you'll say it's either a scare tactic or it's not realistic. I think the intent, and I was the one that asked for the request for what those reductions would look like, both school and municipal, not because I, again, endorse necessarily doing that, and not because I want to scare people, but I think we have an obligation as a council to have informed decision-making. And I think it's really important for us to understand that every action that we take up here, whether it's voting for stickers on trash barrels or budgets, has a consequence, and there's an outcome that hopefully we've thought about and foreseen before we take action. So I'm looking forward to the information that comes out, not because I'm looking for gotcha moments or I want to carve any programs out, but I think it's important for us to understand as a community the decisions that are made and the impacts that are going to come from those decisions. So I'll plug Counselor Bayman's cable committee only because I'm getting kind of tired of hearing that every two weeks. Hopefully someone will step up, and maybe you can offer, you know, free DirecTV or something in the process.
Holy donuts with cheesy bacon filling, I guess.
There you go. Holy donuts, there you go.
That's all I got. There you go.
Thank you. I did want to comment a little bit about the budget, because going into this year, I think all of us who are close to the budget, and all seven members work hard to understand it, knew this was going to be a tough year. And so I am thrilled to be sitting here excited about this budget. And the reason I'm excited is kind of because our leadership at both the town level, the town manager, and at the school level with the superintendent and the school board's finance committee have really presented lean budgets. Now, I'd love to be able to report that we have all the money in the world and we can expand programs and expand services, but the truth was, last year was a very difficult budget, and we had to fill a big hole as state revenue went down. You can't spend what you don't have, and so I had some real trepidation about this. But the school started right off last year and put a stop on any extra spending. Hundreds of thousands of dollars were saved as a result just by running a lean, efficient ship, and I was impressed by that order coming out of the superintendent's office right off the bat last year. That was real leadership. I'm also excited because we have not only two of the best year-over-year cost increases, because I always look at, are we spending a lot more money than we did the year before? And I sort of measure it as salary increases in the 2% range, health insurance driving you crazy, some other cost of living adjustments. It's hard to stay below a 3% cost year-over-year cost increase. Well, both of these budgets are in the range of 3%, both school and the town for operating costs. The town's looks a little bit odd because we have $760,000 worth of bond expenses this year that were approved, largely approved, but when you just look at operating costs, those aren't operating costs, the town budget's in the low threes, and the school's in the high twos, and that's quite an accomplishment. I also am very pleased that the town council saw fit to advance a partial revaluation, which is going to add a dramatic amount of assessed value to the town's tax rolls when our tax rate is set in August and the tax bills go out in September. We will be talking next, two weeks from now, on May 18, or May 16, about what the tax rate impact is. The town manager's working closely with the town assessor on what a cautious and conservative estimate would be about what that looks like, but even the most cautious and conservative estimate is going to bring that figure down so that the community is going to be very pleased with the outcome. I would not have made a commitment to being under 3% without having a full appreciation of what that effect will have, and it will have a very, very positive effect on the outcome of this budget. So with that, I do want to also urge people to vote on May 8, and I want you to vote with a full appreciation of what people are trying to do with this election. Learn what's going on, and then vote with your head. I think that, but please do the work in the community so that you know what's going on and cast your vote. Lastly, I want to be able to thank Larissa Crockett, who was the assistant town manager and who stood in very ably. It was a difficult week for all of us, and I know that Tom Hall felt he had left things in good hands with our assistant town manager, and I want to very much express my appreciation. And I certainly appreciated the courtesy and the professionalism that all of the speakers exhibited in the public hearing we had last week. I was very impressed by all of you. With that, I'll ask for an adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. I want to start keeping this afloat, please.